Welcome to the Village of Red Hook December trustee meeting. It is December 6th. It is 7:02. Thank you all for being here and thank you for being here virtually as well. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And just as a reminder, if anyone's planning to speak, if they haven't already signed in, please do so. And we will ask that you state your name and address so that we have that for the record. And we are starting with the public hearing for the amended version of the local law to amend the official zoning map of the Village of Red Hook. And I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Kavolchak to give a brief overview of this law. And I will just add before Brent does that, we have Victoria Aladuro who is on screen, who is our land use attorney and has been heavily involved in all of this. So she is, she is one who can clarify, clarify issues. Take it away.
So this public hearing has been duly notified and noticed by November 18th, 2021, Resolution Number 20, also been published in the Canadian data treatment online. And there is lots, so in a nutshell, what we're proposing is some revisions to our official zoning map. We are currently changing out the current highway business district and changing that to a gateway business district. This will allow more uses such as accommodations, hospitality, restaurants, various other uses that you could see in the amended law. We're also revising the setbacks for that provision, making the setback where it was 50 feet, but moving them closer so they'd be more as a fine place. The Jason Street Bill 2 line, so it'd be a nice line coming into the village. You can also find bulk regulations on that. We did come in a three-story building, 50 feet, which is as tall as what we have on the four corners of the village. So that's a big change there. Also adding one property that was currently in the R10,000 into that. We're also expanding the neighborhood mixed-use district. There'll be eight properties added to that district. Seven on South Broadway, the five West Side, two on the East Side, and one property on Elizabeth Street. That's from the chocolate factory. We're also upending the shed ordinance. So a shed can now be permitted in the corner of the lot where the setback are five feet from the side yard and five feet from the rear setback. So adding accessory buildings, one story with the same setback requirements, five feet from the side yard, five feet from the rear yard. Two stories are permitted, but they would have to subscribe to the setback regulations and bulk rates in the zones that they do. And this is applicable to all zones of the village. If there is another amendment is that we are permitting accessory apartments and accessory buildings in residential districts and all districts. And if it's a new structure, again, subscribe to the two-story, would have to subscribe to the prevailing setback apartments of those zones. If it's an existing two-story structure, it could be changed to an accessory apartment as well. And I believe that's pretty much the crux of the zoning amendments that we have proposed.
Great, thank you. Just to clarify my apologies, our screen says Karen's iPad. That would be Karen Smythe and Deputy Mayor Brent Kavolchak. We, some things technologically I'm still learning. And so without, I just want to clarify about a public hearing. There are rules that apply. It is, the public hearing is not like a workshop, so it is not a back and forth dialogue, but it is a forum for the public to comment on what you see and interpret on the document. And the board is to listen, but is not under any obligation to respond or answer any specific question. There is a sign-in sheet that I've mentioned before, so that we will take your names. And then for those via Ring Central, if you would raise your hand if you would like to comment, and you will be duly recognized in time. Time allotted for each speaker will be three minutes. That's really just so that we keep, keep it moving. I'm not going to be super strict to the three, three minutes, but if you keep it roughly to that, each person can speak once. If you have more to say, you can come back. No members of the public will be permitted to speak during the public hearing unless recognized by the mayor. And all remarks are to be addressed to the board and not the audience. And all persons speaking will be given respect and courtesy and in return are expected to be respectful and courteous. The use of profane slanders are inexcusable on which will not be accepted. And with that, we, I need a motion to open the public hearing. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, second?
All right. Just like to add too that there, there's a big copy of the med is on there. You know that? The board members have a little copy and a copy is also available online for those who are online with this public hearing.
Okay. And Sarah, you're for later, great. Angela, Angela Lor?
Hi.
Hi. You know what? If you would come on up and I'd like you to use Brent's microphone so that everyone can hear you.
Is there any way to ask people spell their names and say where they're from?
Well, they can certainly say their name.
Angela Lor, L-O-R-E. I have a question regarding one of the definitions. Apartment under section five, it says a dwelling unit located on a second or third floor of a commercial, commercial or mixed-use building. So if you, if you had a two, a three-story building, would that be one apartment on each of the second and third floor? Or if it was a large building, would it be apartments? Would that be plural?
Which section? I'm sorry, which section?
Page two, under section five, the second definition under apartment.
Oh, so it's a question of whether or not there can be multiple apartments?
Correct.
I believe that was the intention, so long as it meets all of the other requirements.
Okay, because yeah, it's not plural there anyway, so that was, that was a question.
Do you, even though this isn't supposed to be back and forth. Victoria, do you have any comment on that?
Hi, everyone. I'll just say the definition is not plural, the same way that, you know, accessory dwelling is not plural, but later on in the law, it clarifies that you can have both of the apartments. So let me look for the section and I'll come back to it at the end.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, that's the only person we have here. Is there anyone on, on Ring Central who is interested in speaking? Do we have any raised hands? No, okay. Well, we're 10 minutes in. Do the board, board members have any comments that they'd like to make? Okay. I guess, well. So the process is that we, we also need to, oh yes, Victoria, you waving your hand?
Well, I was just ready to address that, that one question if everyone wants to listen. It says in section 20 of the law, it says in the GB and GWB districts, there's no limit on the number of apartments permitted, provided that certain criteria are met. And then there's, you know, minimum square footage for the apartment. It has to be 600 square feet of habitable space. And then if you start to have multiple apartments more than three, the law does require that some of the apartments have more than, have two or more bedrooms, so that you just don't get a bunch of studios. So we're, one of the purposes in drafting this was to provide for a variety of housing types for people in the village.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. So I, I'm actually going to suggest that we move to extend the public hearing to our January meeting. And the reason for that is we have submitted the revisions to Dutchess County planning and we have not gotten their comments back. And so we really can't finish this now anyway. So I'm going to propose that we extend the public hearing to our January meeting, which is January 10th. Can I get a motion to do that? Oops, sorry. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Kavolchak just moved. Thank you. Trustee Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, terrific. So we will extend that. So for the general public, if you have any questions that they come up in the meantime or any comments that you'd like to share, please feel free to come back to our January 10th meeting. At that time, we also, part of the process is seeker review and environmental assessment forms, so we will have all of that to take care of at our January 10th meeting. All right, so with that, we will now move on to the next orders of business. I did, before we get into the, the need of the meeting, I just wanted to comment on, on COVID. Thank you, everyone, for wearing a mask. I believe it's incredibly important that we do that. Red Hook had a, had a spike in cases and we do almost about 49 in the town. The village has always been equal or less to five. That hasn't changed over the, certainly over the past few weeks. Red Hook is now down to 26 and we want to keep it that way. Dutchess County, on the other hand, is, now has over 1,000 active cases. It has almost a 5.2% positive results. Just for perspective, in the end of October, it was 1.9%. And so we are still in the thick of it. So I'll just take this opportunity to encourage everyone to get vaccinated if you haven't been and to get boosted if you've been vaccinated. I got boosted yesterday and feeling good today, happily. Arm hurts, that's all. But, so I just wanted to make that comment. It does appear in Dutchess County that it's the southern part of the county where the larger number of cases are, but that doesn't mean that we're not still at risk. So just stay vigilant. Did that already? Next thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes for the November 8th Village Board Meeting. They have a motion to approve the minutes. Thank you. Brent, second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any, any revisions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Oh, I should have done it together. We also have the, the Village Workshop Minutes. Apologize for just giving those to you today, but are you, are you all ready to approve that now? I am looking like yes. So a motion to approve the November 18th Workshop Meeting Minutes? Thank you, Brent, second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, revisions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. And I'm going to move up in the, in the calendar, just the, in memory of Sam, Samuel Harkins. As I think many of you know, Samuel Harkins passed away recently and he was a building inspector for the village for many years. He, he left, he left that employee several years ago, but he was here with the village for a very long time. And as is tradition with the Village of Red Hook, we would like to insert a blank page in his memory into our, into our minutes. And with that, I'd like to move on to the treasurer's report. Ray, you're up. I don't know how far you can see on this event.
I think you, we have a little bit of a meeting.
We'll be a little closer. Thank you. It's for the recording as much as anything.
So the account balances as of November the 30th, 2021, in the general fund, $681,970.56. The water fund, $155,130.92. Trust and agency, $25,015.23. Petty cash, $14.79. Village Green, $4,652.92. Hard Scrabble, $3,441.62. Health insurance, $2,452.99. And the sewer fund, $2,923.86. The reserve checking balances as of the end of November, fire department, $5,033.39. Police, $14,585.30. USDA, $134,034.63. Highway, $30,582.43. Snow reserve, $3,279.53. Tower reserve, $17,711.57. Unemployment, $4,544.17. Court reserve, $3,298.62. And office reserve, $972.53. The total monthly expenses in the month of November, the general fund, $297,874.23. This number appears to be extremely high for one month, but I want to point out that there were three pay cycles that came through the account in the month of November. And we also paid the New York State Local and Retirement Fund of $134,354 ahead of time because we saved the $1,000 by doing so. In terms of the water fund, the monthly expenses, $57,115.54. This number was also somewhat higher because we, we paid a principal and interest to the USDA for the phase one of $34,470. The monthly expenses for trust and agency, $2,661.75. And the sewer fund, $22,073.25. That concludes the treasurer's report for the month of November.
Thank you. Do we need to, so we need to accept the treasurer's report? Motion to accept the treasurer's report? Thank you, Brent, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions or discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Ray, I appreciate it. All right, next is the police, police report. For the month of November, there were 313 incidents, 218 in the Village of Red Hook, 92 in the town of Red Hook, and three in the Village of Tivoli. There were 52 uniform traffic tickets, 23 in the Village of Red Hook, and 29 in the town of Red Hook. And it has a number of parking tickets, but I think that's one. It's listed on my sheet. No, okay. It's just one. And then there were five arrests, two in the Village of Red Hook and three in the town of Red Hook. The only other thing I was, so just in talking about personnel, just wanted to mention, we are in the interviewing process for a part-time village clerk and hope to have one in place by the next meeting, before the next, well, before the next meeting. And I just want to mention the monthly newsletter, that it's an email newsletter. It went out, the December one went out this morning. And I would encourage anyone, if you haven't signed up for it and you have an email and would like to get it, it's, the intention is to share information as well as events and information. And so it's, it's hopefully a nice way for people to have a sense of what's going on. There's an easy way to sign up on the village website, which is redhookvillage.org. Under stay informed, there's a newsletter signup. And I would also just encourage folks that if something happens in the Village of Red Hook that you'd like to see in the newsletter, send me photos, send me ideas. If you have events for your groups, please send them forward. I can be reached at mayor@redhooknyvillage.org or you can find that, or you can send it to info@redhooknyvillage.org. But please feel free to send it, send it forward. Would like to make this newsletter something that is of use, of use to folks who are in the village and interested in the village. With that, let's move on to planning zoning reports and Laura Hark is going to do that for us.
So the building department monthly report for November, there were seven building permits issued, four certificates of compliance, one certificate of occupancy. There was one municipal search, six fire inspections, two complaints. Planning board actions, signage application approved for property located at 7545 North Broadway. No zoning board of appeals meeting due to no agenda. Money's collected for the month of November, $1,792. Great, thank you very much.
All right, now on to Deputy Mayor Kavolchak.
Thank you. I'll start with the Village Green Committee monthly reports of November. The current balances of the Village Green, related to the council says of November 30th are as follows. Community verification, a balance of $3,995.66. Shade trees contractual, $2,500 to the Village Green checking account. A balance of $4,652.92. There were no Village Green committees, meetings held during the month of November. And the annual fall planting date occurred on December 6th. 16 volunteers planted 12 trees throughout the village. Tree sites were located on Alhurst Road, Reddrow Road, Carter Street, Brayley Street, and then Richard Abraham's Memorial Park. The Village Green Committee thanks Michelle Becker of Bethel Construction for assisting and digging holes at the tree sites. And Chris Kuhn of the Village Highway Department for watering the trees after planting. And thanks to all the Village Green officers and volunteers who made the 2021 annual fall planting, they had a success. And the Village Green is having discussions with the property owner on Old Coast Road regarding relocation and the removal of a tree planted several years ago. Remodeling work will occur during the spring of 2022. The 2021 Tree City USA applications are fairly deep and applications are due by December 31st and to, to the Arbor Day Foundation's portal. This will be our 20th year as a Tree City USA. It's great. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted up near adjacent village and or state road right of base, volunteering compliant days, are making a contribution to those three committees. Various community verification projects may contact David Pearson, the village clerk, or myself. The Village of Red Hook Highway Department monthly report for November, the Village Highway Department is currently picking up leaves. Leave pickup will continue to December as weather permits. Please file leaves curbside for removal. The Highway Department will not pick up leaves mixed with brush due to possible equipment damage. The village's snow ordinance is clearly in effect as of November 1st through March 31st of 2022. No parking is permitted on village streets from 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM. In our New York State highways, which are around, I think, around Broadway and around 189 of Market Street, from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM during the same period. When snow or ice removal operations run away, any vehicle parked or abandoned on Main Street may be moved by or under the direction of the Reddrow Police Department or any dislodging law enforcement agency. Costs associated with vehicle towing and stores will be charged to the vehicle's owner. The owner and owner occupant of every building or lot in the village with an enjoyable sidewalk shall reduce snow and ice within a clear one-four period of a snowstorm. At the direction of the Village Board of Trustees, the Village Highway Department may reduce snow or ice left unclear at a cost of $2 per million foot. This cost will be assessed and collected with the next tax levying. The Village Highway Department continued no parking signs on the north side of Prince Street when the Village Municipal Parking Lot, the Church Street. The Village Mayor, Jake Smith, designated Village Red Hook Highway Department foreman on November 19th. Jake replaces now retired foreman Dan Strahan. And the old Dutch Village Garden Club has requested treasury subpoles be placed in the club's garden at the north end of Royal Park. And the Village Highway Department purchased a 16-foot by eight-foot by six-foot height material at a cost of $10,900. The cost of the purchase will be deducted from the chips and maintenance of street scrap tools, private lines, of the general fund. The Village Highway Department has been approved to purchase a metal detector to replace the existing metal detector that will water functions for approximately $800. The cost of the purchase will be deducted from the maintenance of street scrap tools, private line of the general fund. Revenue was generated from the sales scrap metal on October 20th. We got $581 on November 15th. Excuse me. Yeah, $176.80 for November's revenues, $574. Top revenue generated from sales scrap metal in fiscal year 21, 22 is $3,444.80. Since inception of the scrap recycling program in September of 2007, $39,737.11 has been generated. The proceeds from this program will go toward the purchase of tools and equipment from the Village Highway, Water, and Materials Management Departments. Residents and businesses interested in building scrap metal, they can contact the Village Highway Department at 845-758-8600, or the Village Clerk's Office. Highway Department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. And as you can see, we've tapped into that Monday as we speak. The engine is for passports and the rent of infrastructure left to be purchased by November. So with the Reddrow Sewer Project, meetings were held on November 5th, 10th and 19th of the Reddrow Village Building and the telephone conference call. The following items were discussed. An amended Form E was submitted to USDA Rural Development on the first to finalize the amended letter conditions. Reminders and requests to approve the minority and women-owned business enterprise waivers as per the requirements for the New York State Environmental Standards Corporation were forwarded on November 1st, 2nd, 5th, 8th, 15th, 16th, and 19th. Almost every day we try to final sign them.
Thank you. I think we were anxious.
The letter of conditions originally approved by USDA on December 29th, 2016, was amended by USDA to reflect the revised project cost and financing. It was forwarded to the Village of Red Hook on November 5th. And funding for the sewer project is as follows. So USDA granted us a loan of $3,700,000. USDA Rural Development, we also granted, received a grant in the amount of $1,200,000. The New York State Environmental Standards Corporation has given us a 0% interest loan for $2,662,118. And we also received a New York State Environmental Standards Corporation Clean Water State Revolving Fund, water infrastructure improvement act grant of $925,000. The total project cost is $8,447,118. The New York State Environmental Standards Corporation reviewed and accepted the MWB utilization plan and labor requests for both copper construction, which our prime general contractor, and Sastos Contracting, which is our prime electrical contractor, on November 19th. on November 19th. All approvals from funding and regulatory agencies have been reviewed and approved. The anticipated construction start date on November 15th, 2021, has been rescheduled into the delay funding approvals and regulatory requirements. The revised schedule for the project start is meant to late December. I believe we just got an email today from Carver stating that it may be the end of December, possibly the beginning of January. We're still looking at substantial completion. It'll be November of 2022 and final completion is anticipated to be in July of 2023. The groundbreaking ceremony is tentatively scheduled for December 10th. And this is pending a lot of stuff still, but we'll keep you posted.
Not the 10th. That would, that would be this Friday.
We're not going to do it on the 10th.
We're not doing it on the 10th.
We're hoping to get the sign up before we do it.
Exactly.
It'll be soon and we'll let you know when this happens and maybe after the start of construction, there's a ceremonial groundbreaking, but it feels important that we had to pick this off, let's get it started.
Also looking to coordinate schedules, so.
Yes. And the sewer service area property owners will receive an notification from Carver Construction. At least 10 days of work will be conducted on their property. An updated schedule will be posted every Friday on the village of Red Hook website to keep property owners and the public informed regarding the progress of the sewer project.
If I can just jump in just to clarify the final completion being July 2023. That's the final, all the final paperwork, all the final numbers, et cetera. The sewer system itself will be, is contracted to be fully operational by the end of the year, 2022.
Yeah, this is just to close on the low and certainly there's going to be a lot of tricky paperwork involved. On November 12th, Mayor Smythe and myself presented and discussed the Red Hook Sewer Project to the Red Hook Rotary Club.
And perhaps I can add, if anyone has an organization that, that you'd like to have a presentation on the sewer project, we'd be more than happy to take our show on the road. So just, just let us know.
And moving to the village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Maintenance Improvement Project of the 202021 New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Drinking Water State Devolving Fund Water Infrastructure Improvement. At the grant application for PFOS removal and water system resiliency upgrade that was prepared by Delaware engineer, engineering was submitted for review and approval on November 22nd. 60% of the $1.8 million project cost will be funded by the Wea Grant. If approved, the project will include repaying the outer street elevated water storage tank, repairing the Red Hook Town Road Village water system pinch connect located on Willow Creek, repair and replace various goose neck connections from the water mains to the fiber property service lines. The properties in the northeast quadrant of the village. Repair and replace various valves throughout the village and fight upgrades to the water treatment plant control systems. Conference call with 3C3 and B, which are, is our village water operator happened on November 12th. And we just reviewed some of the various upgrades and improvements and repairs needed for the projects. We've also discussed prepared additional asset management plan. Various vendors are currently reviewing the plan. Will include inventory of GPS locations of water mains, hydrants, valves, maintenance repair schedules for the village water system. Also an inventory GPS locations of tanks, pumps, ladders, mains, valves, maintenance repair schedules for the sewer system. They also have an inventory GPS locations and maintenance repair schedules for the attached business. Inventory GPS locations and replacement schedules of village street signs. And hopefully of village GPS locations and removal planting schedules in the village street trees. Proposals and costs assessment is a fourth time for a due consideration by the board of trustees. The village will be conducting a location survey of water mains, valves, and portions of the Red Hook water system. I think this is on the southeast part primarily. Now the survey will be conducted by New England Surface Imaging. The survey will be completed in December of 2021. In order to rent it solar, CSA, the replacement of trees and shrubbery of the vegetator screen surrounding the outside for the solar arrays located at the Red Hook Village. House like a well field will be completed in the spring of 2022 due to expanded hobby or spenders in tree nursery. Inter municipal task force side, well Charlie and I sit as village representatives. There were no task force meetings held during the month of November. And the Red Hook Town Board is considering proposals from the task force, Red Hook Economic Development and Public Influence regarding short term Red Hook. There's committees I sit on.
Before you go there, I just had a note relating to the snow ordinance and streets. I just wanted to mention that if anyone has anything in the right of way, for example, a basketball hoop, if you would remove that for the snow season, because that both when there's snow and the snowplows are coming, they risk to damage your, your equipment and ours and villagers. So if you would remove anything that might be in the right of way for the winter, we appreciate it.
The committee reports, there were no meetings on the Red Hook Town. So the review committee or community preservation by the advisory board, I said both those boards. The current balance of the community preservation fund as of November 30th is $2,565,036.46. We can see that number rise steadily since last March. No meetings of the Northern Texas YS Executive Committee and no meetings of the South Hill Watershed Committee. The town plan of global waterfront revitalization program working group met on November 29th. We reviewed the results of the LWRP survey. Survey was available to the links of the town website, Red Hook Town Hall, Red Hook Fiber and Chillicothe, survey requested input and suggestions for the LWRP working group to consider including active and passive recreational amenities on the Hudson River waterfront. Upgrades regarding visual and physical access to facilities and infrastructure, access to the Hudson River, additional inventory and analysis information, and additional resources for the LWRP working group to consider. We had 16 responses received as of November 19th. We also discussed the town registration regarding the harbor management plan. This plan is a new required, required section of the town of Red Hook LWRP as stipulated by the New York State Department of State. The village of Red Hook zoning review committee, there were no meetings held during the month of November. And I think we had the public hearing and all available stuff reviewed and is all right for you at this point. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm very impressed that you know what all the acronyms are. The only one you didn't say was PFOS, PFOA. Do you know those? You know all the other ones. Thank you. It's obvious how much work you put into your duties as Deputy Mayor and it's greatly appreciated. Trustee Ryan. You have some good news.
Yes, absolutely. Something with good news. So I have a monthly report for materials.
Hey Charlie, can you bring the microphone over closer, please? Thank you.
Yes. I have the November report for materials management. We picked up and dropped off 1.9 tons of combing gold, like 68 tons of cardboard and 1.47 tons of paper for a total recycling volume of 3.27 tons. Unfortunately, there was a very small amount of contaminated recycling again in that in the recycling that was picked up. So that cost us, I mean, it only cost us $3 until we sent this down around, but it's a little frustrating when we get charged for the recycling that should be clean. And I know there was a little, a little reminder in your December, December newsletter as to everybody being mindful of putting out clean recycling and not including things like pizza boxes and anything else that might contaminate the recycling and that costs the village.
The, there's a, there's a link to the Ultracanine Resource Recycling Center that has a, it's a very nice visual of what you can recycle and what you can't recycle. We may print out a few copies so that we can get those out if people ask for them, but there, the link is also available on our website.
Yeah. We also picked up 8.04 tons of garbage and we sold $2,916 of the tax. So our costs were between the garbage and the fuel surcharge and the contaminated recycling. Our total costs came to $898.18. My other.
Just, just to clarify, that's not the total costs for the management of the garbage program? That does not include the cost of our highway staff? I just, it, it looks like it's a highly profitable endeavor, which it is not.
It is not. We try and break even, but yes.
Yeah.
We're not making money out of the.
Just to be clear, there's, there's additional expenses that go with picking up garbage.
Thank you. So I also have the monthly report for the Red Hook Water Treatment Facilities. So for the month of November, the water treatment facility created 7,282,400 total gallons, which is an average of 242,700 gallons per day. And that's, that's right around where we like to see it. Just shy of 250,000 gallons a day. Hopefully it will stay that thing.
That, that was my reference to good news. I looked up October, which was about 8.8 million in total gallons. So it was a, I like to think that that's a reflection of the fixing of several of the leaky water valves. Sure, what else that would be due to, but that certainly doesn't impact.
Yep. So it's, it's, it's looking good at the moment. We also sent off four samples for bacteriological testing for the month. And they all came back clean, so no colorful, no E coli. And then the water treatment plant used 74 gallons of sodium perchlorite, which is an average daily use of 2.46 gallons per day. I just should point out that the chemical usage is directly related to the volume of water treated. So we use less water, then we have, we can use less chemicals to treat it. So that's all good.
My question is, right Charlie?
Yeah.
Is there some way we could, I don't know how you would do this, but compare the amount of water we sell versus how much we pump? If there's any correlation between, then we could maybe better gauge if there's something up there. So if we sell a lot in one month, we'd be using a lot more, but if we don't sell as much.
We should, we should have access to those, those numbers.
Yeah. We would have to do it on quarterly basis. Obviously, that's what a brewery cycle is, but it may, it may be challenged with what we would do.
Yeah. And we would certainly hope to see a response, you know, if, after fixing a couple of leaky valves, you know, we can see those, those numbers tighten up.
I mean, that's kind of how we discovered out in the phase two of a water repair that we were just losing about 40% of our water. The value of what we were, so much we were selling, so.
We have extremely well drained soils on the village.
Yes, we do.
But that's, that's what I thought.
Great. Thank you. All right. Trustee Charlie. So Red Hook Together, meeting was held on the afternoon of December 2nd. The theme was senior services. Participants were proud to share what programs were working as well as what new and continuing needs are now being met. Currently, there are many organizations and programs available locally for senior populations, providing hot meals, tech help, ride assistance, snow shoveling, daily programming, phone check-ins, and educational offerings. The groups also discuss ongoing challenges faced by seniors that have, in some cases, been compounded by a pandemic, such as navigating the complex health system, lack of transportation, increased social inflation, as well as the challenge of facing a fixed income in the face of rising costs. It was proposed that two working groups be created, one to focus on advocacy regarding regional service access, and the other to facilitate coordinating the seasonal screening event program.
Mel Corbett, just, this reminds me, what I'd love would be to, if we could come up perhaps with a series of organizations or places where people can get help and put it at the bottom of the newsletter. I think that would be a nice thing to have available all, all the time.
Sounds great. The Town Economic Development Council, the EDC, has moved their now weekly meetings back to Zoom platform. November 10th, meeting focused on the SDR hearing and the town supervisor, Robert McKean, answered committee members' questions and concerns. November 17th, meeting focused again on the town of Red Hook's proposed SDR law. November 24th, meeting was canceled due to the holiday. December 1st, conversation focused partly on the COVID pandemic and the impact the right of humans on business growth to the greater community. Several members also voiced support of extending the no public hearing on the proposed zoning law amendment since none of the EDC members have been proposed zoning map changes in time for the meeting on December 1st. Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee met on the evening of December 2nd over Zoom. Committee member Lauren Cherry shared that she stepped down from her seat for personal reasons. The committee also welcomed two potential members and discussed with them their interest in joining the committee. The possibility of getting a second from the village to cover ongoing outreach and translation costs across the preferred cumulative, cumulative five committee members to cover translation printing in the last year have been expected to be around $300 with broch once again. We also considered the possibility of partnering with the Events Committee to do work needed in relationship building events, who perhaps investigating a community member profile, if that pair, individual stories, or. Project details need to be further developed. Members will research similar examples for January's meeting. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee. The committee meets every Wednesday at 1:30 PM. Our work continues on the newsletter development, creating, updating, and formatting content for the village website. Sorry, acting village clerk Laura Hart, Cam Evans, and I have been working to identify missing minutes and modify existing entries so that they're uniformly formatted. The RCP webpage has made significant progress. We hope to have it launched for public viewing Zoom. Eve Campbell and the mayor have been working diligently on the December newsletter. People are encouraged to sign up for the monthly email newsletter on the village website at redhookvillage.org. And if I can just interject, but Cam Evans and Eve Campbell are barred interns that have been working with the village for, for the semester. We are very grateful to have them. Yes, I'm doing very well. Village of Red Hook Card Scrabble Events Committee. The Events Committee held the first light of the village event, enjoying the lights brightening the village business district and giving out coupons for half the children. They look forward to building on this year's effort in the future. For this December, the Events Committee and the villagers supporting planned events by the VFLU and Rice Church, as well as having attended the lighting of the ceremonies, community menorah by rabbi Knecht at the municipal lot. The committee has a monthly meeting open to the public on the third Monday of every month at 15:00 PM. Meetings are held in the village hall. Village residents and representatives of community groups are especially encouraged to attend the January 17th meeting where we will be discussing the 2022 event calendar and the openings for new ideas and collaborations. No ongoing commitment is required to attend meetings, so enthusiasm and new volunteers are always welcome. If you can't make a meeting or want more information about your committee, email committee chair Amy Smith at events@redhooknyvillage.org. village of Red Hook Public Spaces Initiative Committee. The committee met via Zoom on November 27th, 2021 to discuss an anticipated project on planting pollinator friendly gardens in the village. And a possible collaboration with the Events Committee for a cover music sculpture exhibit at Abrams Park. Additionally, the committee expressed interest in ways or budgets projects may be budgeted for by the village as well as identifying other non-taxpayer projects. You have anything to add, Brett? Does that cover it?
No, we did have some discussions about Abrams Park, doing master plan, whether long-term or seasonal sculpture or related things that I like at your. seasonal sculpture or related things, not only at Abrams Park, but perhaps other sites and things, which, um. There's a big turnout, you know, a large group, it's been a good.
The Red Hook Public Library reports that Red Hook Public Library Committee Sample Program on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-one was successfully attended by representatives of all six of the village's committees. Any member of the public interested in learning more about the committee representatives can find committee descriptions, public meeting times, members' names, and contact information under the Government tab on the village website, redhookvillage.org. The Red Hook Public Library applied for a county infrastructure grant, fixed the roof and the spado exterior, and should have the decision before the end of the year. They also fixed the empty basement wall that was affecting the alcoves in the children's room. Red Hook Public Library obtained the advice of an engineer before hiring contractors for this project, and the job included parsing the basement wall in the area, in that area, and adding a sidewalk to direct waterway from the building. The library also obtained adequate funding to continue the team takeover program through December and are applying for 2022 projects. Also on the horizon, Red Hook Public Library is partnering with Bard and three other libraries on a big reproduct in the spring. Sure, thank you. All right, onto regular business. Um, I wanted to start out mentioning, um, the agenda since village public restroom use. Um, the first time I met with the former mayor in April, um, he, when I came in the building, he was in the downstairs bathroom dealing with a, um, a backup in the first floor bathrooms. Since I became mayor, I believe, I have dealt with three of those. Um, and it was suggested by one of the multiple plumbers that have been here that if we were to, the, the way the piping was laid out and the way it was pitched was adding to the problem. And so last week, uh, they repiped that system, um, but they also found uh, that the clog was again wipes and paper towels, and so, um, not necessarily the nicest conversation to have, but if I can encourage all of you, whenever you're using a toilet, wherever you are, don't put wipes, don't put paper towels down the toilet, because it messes everything up. So, um, we have about twelve signs in the bathrooms now, um, in the hopes that we will, with the combination of the repiped plumbing and, um, many, many reminders that we will no longer. I, I'm happy to deal with the sewer project. I'd really rather not deal with the, um, toilet backups and village hall anymore. Uh, just wanted to update as relates to the cannabis law. In November, we passed a law to opt out of the, um, onsite consumption establishments. Some people call lounges, um, some people call them cafes. Um, so we passed a law to opt out, and just to clarify, opting out now does not mean we cannot opt back in later. Um, uh, there, part of the law is there's a thirty-day period where, um, uh, the public, the village public could do a referendum to overturn that. Um, there are two more days left for that. Um, and that just requires people to have, um, a certain portion of the, um, voters to have signed a petition to, um, put the question to a referendum for the village. Uh, and so that time period will end on Wednesday. Um, hybrid meetings. Um, first of all, a thank you to Kami, who was sitting behind the parents' screen, um, who is our high school, um, Red Hook High School intern. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you for allowing us to make, have a hybrid meeting. Um, and we are going to be switching. We had been, we are currently on, uh, Ring Central. Um, and we, at the beginning of the pandemic, um, the village, in conjunction with the beginnings of Red Hook Response, both used Ring Central. And Red Hook Response uses a lot of the features of Ring Central, and the village really only needs a, um, a hybrid meeting capacity. And, um, since the vast majority of people are doing Zoom, they're either doing Zoom or, or Microsoft meetings and something else. But Zoom seems to be incredibly well-known and making it easy for people to use. Um, it is, it will ultimately be less expensive for the village, so we've paid for, um, Ring Central, um, for the village and for Red Hook Response through this month, and so in January, we'll be switching to Zoom. It was a win-win all around. Um, we're very happy to do it. And, uh, so next month, hopefully I'll get my name changed correctly on the, on the screen. I don't know how to do that in Zoom. I don't know how to do that in Ring Central. Uh, the next item is of the village noise ordinance. Um, we had a, um, a complaint. Uh, there was a an appearance ticket that was, um, that was issued for a violation of the village's noise ordinance. Um, and the defendant's lawyer put forward a motion challenging the constitutionality of the noise ordinance. Um, the noise ordinance, uh, well, and so the judge has ruled on that. Um, and this pretty well sums it up. Inasmuch as the village noise ordinance does not give the constitutionally mandated fair notice of what is a violation and thereby invites arbitrary and discriminatory enforcement, it is the judgment of the court that said village ordinance is unconstitutionally vague and the charges against the defendant are dismissed. Um, I, I don't have, um, the actual ordinance in front of me, but it, it is very vague. There is no measurable, um, level of noise that is considered um, a problem, and as the judge said, it's a little, uh, instead of having a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, it says just don't go too fast. So we will be addressing our noise ordinance, um, in the coming year. And happy to, if anyone has thoughts or comments on that, please, please don't hesitate to, uh, to reach out. I appreciate it. Okay, the next item is, uh, the year end, our fiscal year ends in the end of May, and our year end, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, we have budget modifications, and this is, we are required to do that, um, because all the, all the budget lines need to meet match all of these actual expenses. And so, um, you trustees got the list. Um, it is a lengthy list. Um, I will say that, um, it was the practice of the prior administration to wait until the end of the year to make any of these adjustments. Um, I, I, I will plan to do, do these adjustments more likely on a quarterly basis, and so in January, I'll be looking to do, uh, the first, that would be seven months of the twenty-one, twenty-two year, we'll make those adjustments. Because many of these items, once we've paid, paid a, um, a bill, um, occasionally there's some annual bills that we pay at once. We know what that number is, and so we should make that adjustment for the budget level. So I'll be doing that going forward. Um, but today, we need to make these adjustments to have the, um, to have our, um, twenty twenty-one budget, um, in compliance. So with that, I would, I will make a motion to accept the budget modifications as presented to you all. Um, can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Issues? We did, we did come in, um, the year where we spent less than we brought in, so we have an increase in our fund balance.
Yeah, I remember that.
It is, we, we do. It's approximately sixty thousand dollars. Um, and I don't have the number of what the current fund balance is. Ray, you know what the current fund balance is?
I don't.
Um, I will have that at the next meeting. Um, major credit to the prior mayor. Um, when he became mayor, the fund balance was a negative, and, uh, he has a wonderful chart that shows it going up and up, and so it was moving its way towards a very hea- a healthy fund balance on his departure. Um, one of the, one of the things that I think we need to tackle is a fund balance policy so that we have a target for what that fund balance is, because we don't want it too big and we don't want it too small. Um, and so finding what, having a discussion around what we think the right level of fund balance is, it's really to make sure that the, that one year, we may have some surprises that we need to pay for, then another year we may not. And so it's to keep, to keep things running smoothly, um, part of good fiscal management. So something that, um, we'll start discussing in January as we discuss the budget for the next fiscal year.
Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, I just wondered, there's a, obviously, there's a lot of icons here which are being adjusted. But there are a couple of lines where the actual expenses are, you know, quite significantly different from the budgeted expense. And I'm sure there's good and reasonable explanations for that. Um, I mean, I'm just looking at, particularly at the, the medical insurance line and wondering why that was, you know, so markedly different uh, actual expense versus budgeted expense.
That's the one that's less, that's, uh, that's the medical insurance employee benefits you're talking about?
Yes, where it.
That it comes in at one seventeen, one hundred and seventeen thousand, whereas it was budgeted at a hundred and seventy-one?
Right. Um, it's a great thing, but.
Yeah, yes. Um, I, I, I have to say that I, I don't have a good handle on what went into the budget as to why it would be so different. One of the things that we do is we tend to pay the medical insurance in one lump sum out of the general fund, but it is, um, it is contributed to by the water fund, for example, because we have salaries that go with, um, with the water fund, and so I'm not sure if the, all of that was taken into account when the budget was made. Um, that, that would be the most logical explanation that I can think of. I'm not aware that our health and health benefits are going, our, our health insurance is going down.
Well, I, I wouldn't expect that to be the case.
Now, we also did, in that timeframe, there were significant changes in the, um, personnel. We had a long-time, full-time clerk and treasurer position, um, that was Cindy Cole, and she retired. And the replacement was a part-time, part-time treasurer, and the acting clerk part went to Lara. So there was, it, it wasn't replaced with the same level of cost, so that may be another reason why it was less.
Yep.
But this is also another reason why I'd rather do these adjustments as we go, um, because it's relevant to have those discussions, and we should have them when they're more, more top of mind.
Yeah, and then we can more actively, you know, expense things next year.
Exactly. So all of this is very important as input into, um, the budget process. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, that's, uh, does anybody else have any other business they would like to? Any other trustee, any other business they'd like to add or address? Okay, then we will move to public comment, and I know Sarah Murphy, you would like to come on up to the, you can maybe put your microphone over there. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Um, so I am here, um, about the plantings around the solar farm. Um, so I'm new to the area, and actually, I'm not a village, um, landowner. I'm a town, but it's a, it was, so I'm learning about the project. It was a joint municipality project. So new to this area, it's been really hard to figure out even who to ask questions of because it's so confusing. So I was here kind of to just open up everyone's eyes to what we've been going through as landowners trying to navigate this. So we're new, but, um, Tara Fallon and her family have been dealing with this much longer. Um, so the trees that were supposed to soften the harsh, um, landscape of the fencing were planted in two thousand nineteen. And through speaking with Tara, they hadn't done very well. They, and what? So actually, I come from a development review board in Vermont, so what we do, when we have, and I actually spoke to Robert about this, but he didn't, it, it was interesting to him. So when we have a town project, they come actually to the development review board as an applicant so that there's a site plan that can be upheld by zoning, the zoning administrator. So if a tree dies, or if the fence doesn't look the way it was supposed to, or a shrub dies, there, the zoning admin- administrator can uphold the site plan. So what I had trouble with, and I spoke to Robert, and he was like, nope, no site plan, or like that, you know, that we don't come as an applicant. This was a joint municipality project. It doesn't work like that here. So, uh, that's, that's okay. So, um, but fast forward to what we're actually dealing with is, um, the, the trees are dead. The shrubs never grew, and Tara has been in contact with, um, I have to get his name right. Um, Irish, Jeff Irish, she is in constant communication with him, who advises her. It's the mayor's problem. It's, you know, talk to the mayor, the, you know, and so I really felt like it needed to come to you guys for you to understand that we're just kind of getting caught in the middle. I've talked to Robert and told him that the trees are dead, and he said, well, we're gonna walk, this was back in May, uh, June. We're gonna walk the, um, we're gonna walk the property and determine what trees are dead. And I said, well, can I come? Can I be invited? Like, can I walk? And he said, no, that doesn't have anything to do with you. That's not, that's, that's a sun, that's our sun comment. So that, at that point, I didn't even know it was a village project. I was calling town. But anyway, so some dates, um, they were planted in two thousand, fall of two thousand nineteen. Um, and I started contacting the town and the village this summer. Tara had spoken to them in May, and she, she's kept all of her communication. Um, May twelfth, they said they were gonna do a full size assessment and site visit. Um, six one, they said that they were working with the town village landscaper. Six nine, um, that he was, he was coming up with a restoration plan. Um, then in September, that they were meeting with a landscaper, you know, in, um, in October, that it was gonna be next week, so it keeps getting pushed and pushed and pushed. And as far as Tara was able to understand with the first landscaping contract, it was two years. So that was why we started pushing really hard this summer, um, because we're concerned that the, that the contract, which we don't, had never seen, but it might be up this, this, this fall as of, to have these trees planted. Um, so I, I thank you for listening to our complaints, but, um, we are asking that we can see a site plan that, that has the identified varieties of plants and shrubs that were supposed to be planted. Um, I would also like to see on that site plan, they have come through and they did do a site assessment, and they tagged trees for replacement, but now I'm concerned that it's gonna go through a whole winter, and who's to know if these little tiny ribbons are gonna be on in the spring, which ones are dead. So a site plan with, um, identified the trees and shrubs that need to be replaced, a timeline for replacement, a clear responsibility, and I really appreciated Deputy Mayor, that when you were a tree, a tree city, that it really does take someone to watch them and water them and make sure that they are growing. So whose responsibility is it gonna be that the plants are, um, established and watered and fertilized until they get there? And also, um, that we make sure that that contract with the, with the landscapers is going to be covered till the spring, because if, if it did in fact time out in two years, and it was two years this fall, are they gonna honor that? And the, the town or village won't be on the hook for that, those plantings. And also, we as, um, neighbors would really love the site plan size of the trees to reflect two years of missed growth, because that's, they, we've, I mean, at least, at least a year, if not two, because those trees should have been replanted this spring. They should have had a whole nother year of growth, and from what Tara remembers originally, they were supposed to be about eight feet.
Seven, seven, eight.
Seven to eight feet, so we feel like they should be bigger trees than they were originally, because we are trying, ultimately, this is supposed to be a screening. And it is, it's not screening. They're, they're dead, and now they're gonna be, you know, they should be, I mean, you could argue they should be three, at least three feet taller and potentially four feet wider by this time, two years of growth. So I know it's not a back and forth, and I appreciate you listening, but I'm just, I have some concerns at how this has been handled, and hopefully that it will move forward better than it has. Thank you.
I really appreciate you coming forward, and I just wanted to, just to clarify, the, um, the contract with the landscape, i- it, it is, is it a two-year contract? However, they have confirmed that they will, uh, it is their delay that is making the replanting in the spring, so they will hon- they will honor the re- the replanting of the trees. uh, it is their delay that is making the replanting in the spring. So they will, they will honor the replanting of the trees that ambushes. That, that is a confirmed agreement. I appreciate your concern. It's a, it's an appropriate one.
Yeah. And then who, who is on, like, is it Sun Common, the village, the town? Who's responsible for like mowing around them and making sure that they are watered and mated?
So it's on, it's on village property. So it is the village's responsibility to do that.
Okay.
The watering was part of the original landscaper's contract. That is correct. And we know well that they did not do a good job. That's, that's very clear.
I, I don't know if you were able to walk back there with.
Many times.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and again, like as landowners, it might be neat to know when you're coming or just to even see what you see. But I mean, the shrubs are nothing.
Complete failure, absolutely.
So is there an idea that they may replace them with a different variety that might be more robust?
The tricky part that you get into is it's a contract and the, the contract is what it is. And so in making sure that they adhere to their portion of the contract, when you start making changes, it then risks to disrupt what it is that they have contracted to do.
And it's, I understand that the bushes never thrive. So I mean.
I would agree. I mean, honestly, if you have a better suggestion for a type of bush, please feel free to send me your thoughts.
I mean, I'm new to the area.
Understood.
The scythia bushes are, you know, abundant here. They don't seem to need, I mean, I'm sure an arborist or a someone would be able to make some sort of recommendation for a bush that might be more hardy.
That's, that's completely fair. Appreciate it.
Something that would be soften, soften the fencing would be great.
As, as was agreed to, two plus years ago.
Is there a way that we would be able to get that site plan and have those identified bushes?
I, I need to get that first.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have, I mean, I, I have my notes. I, I need, I need, I need the landscaping company to come back. And unfortunately, we're dealing with a landscaping company that is super busy at the moment, so it's a little hard to get much response, but we will get it. I have mine, so it will, it will happen. That, that I can assure you. But yes, I will, I will, I will share with you the one, I mean, you can, you've, you've walked it. You know the ones that have been tagged.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just concerned that the tagging.
And that's a fair, that's absolutely fair. Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Great. Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else for public comment?
Just real quick. So this is a, this solar C S A is between three municipalities. So there's a, there's a, there's a, so all three of us were co-applicants for this thing, the town, the town, the brand, and then the village, the red, the pair of secret public hearing. Now, many towns have disappeared from that. There was a plan and as the species of trees that we had, the care and the supervisor, multiple trucks, lots. With Jeff Irish to walk that site, just looking at the trees and determining, because it looks like some of the trees were not doing well. The tops are doing okay, but the wild ones aren't doing so well. The shrub trees were not doing at all. But not every tree was bad. There was a few trees, a couple, I don't know. There were trees that were, that survived and are not healthy at this point in time. So we did take those in the landscape and look at them. I think also if you, if I try to report on the C S A, if there's any, so if you want to check our archives, just kind of look at the monthly reports. Kind of gives you an update of what's going on with that, what meetings have been held and what's been discussed. Kind of the status of where.
And you discuss sometimes the landscaping at those meetings?
Sorry?
And you discuss the landscaping at those meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
So like, most of the meetings that we had were where the meetings are walkthroughs, just to kind of look at the state of the trees and what caused you know, the non-survival, especially of the shrubbery. And again, explaining the bottoms of those trees that happened there. So we did have people look at that.
And I appreciate, you probably have tagged, I'm gonna say sixty percent of the trees that are dead. I, I, I mean, I think it's on my.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, it only, I, let me not comment. I I haven't done that yet.
Yeah, it's many.
It is many. That's true.
And, and as, as a screening device, a tree with no bushes, with no, you know, needles at the bottom, doesn't work as well.
No one wearing them.
So even if the tops are alive, that's not helpful.
No, I think that, that was.
Yes, and I appreciate that. And then also, so if those are meetings, if those could be worn to, to the, I mean, I don't know if it's a public forum, because the, it's a, the C S, it's a C S A, C S D. You know, we, I would go, I would walk with you. I would listen. I, I mean, I don't have to talk, but I can listen to what you are saying. So yeah, if we could get, you know, a job, an email or transparency, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other public comment? Anyone on screen?
Nope.
Okay. We will not, we do not have a need for executive session this evening. Um, I do need, I do need a motion to pay the bills after audit.
Certainly.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any question, discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Hi, thank you. Uh, and just a point of clarification, there will be no workshop in the month of December. So our next regular village board meeting is January tenth. Um, and our virtual part of that will be via Zoom. And with that, wish everyone a very happy holiday and request for a motion to adjourn. Unless anybody has any other business. Okay, hearing none? Motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening.
Second?
I also have a motion.
Uh, all in favor?
I agree.
Thank you very much. And again, happy holidays, everyone.